In accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022 signed by the Governor on February 15, 2022, I announce that this meeting of the Select Board is being recorded by Hadley Media, the Select Board's official office on Zoom, and ask if there's anyone present who is also recording this meeting. Is anybody up there?
No.
Let the minutes reflect that nobody else has indicated that they are recording this meeting. They call the meeting of September 2 to order. Let's start with public comments. I'm sorry, let's start with the consent agenda.
Can we pull out a couple of these?
Oh, wait a minute, I can't. What's the matter?
Shall I read them first, or do you want to pull them out first?
I think you should probably read them first, huh?
All right. Warrants AP 2317S, AP 2317, AP 2316S, AP 2316, PR 2308. Hadley Media Production Assistant Appointment, Stevie Gatto. Special One-Day Alcohol License, B-1 vodka, and there are four different days. Common Vicodin's License, Good DBA Maple Farm Prep. And we're removing the Municipal Hearing Officer Contract -- no, no, I'm sorry, not that. That one's in. Municipal Hearing Officer Contract with the City of Northampton. Intermunicipal Agreement Fiscal Year 23. Taking out the Common Vicodin License.
And also the B-1 for discussion.
Yeah, pull out B-1 for discussion, okay? So, making the last.
So move down the others?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Stevie is on Zoom today, too.
Okay, do we want to say hi to Stevie?
You want.
I think that would be a good idea.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, Stevie, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Great.
You want to mention a little bit why you want to do this?
Uh, yeah, I'm just really interested in local government, and I think this would be a really great opportunity.
Where are you from?
Originally, I'm from New Jersey, but right now I'm living in Northampton, going to Smith College.
How did you hear about the position?
At the career fair.
Very, great, welcome aboard.
Yes, look forward to working with you.
Are you in communications at Smith?
I'm a cultural studies major.
Okay. Great.
She's a cultural studies major, uh, she's in comedy and horror and comedy, so.
It can be very comical, this is true.
She has to work in my office.
No, just in the town will suffice.
Really, anything in town.
What year are you in in school?
I'm a senior.
Oh, so we got to take advantage of you for as long as we've got you, huh?
Yeah, maybe you'll want to stay in the valley and see what's available, right?
Yeah.
Good.
All right, so, um, we've pulled out the special one-day alcohol license for B-1 vodka.
Any special reason, Molly?
Yeah, just wanted to make sure, um, I think it was a question of whether or not that needed to be subject to inspection by the fire department? Is that?
That was one of the restrictions on the probable.
Okay, so, so just, I'll make a motion to approve that subject to a favorable inspection from the fire department.
And building pressure.
And who?
The building pressure.
Okay, so favorable inspections.
Same time.
Okay.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we're removing Maple Farms Foods from the agenda because of a discrepancy in their filing with the state.
They'll be coming back on your meeting on the 16th.
Thank you.
They're going to meet with Jessica tomorrow.
All right.
Done with that.
Done with that. Public comments. Anyone here for public comments? Please raise your hand if you are.
No one's raising their hand. I do think it's important that you face the microphone.
Will I face the microphone, okay, but then somebody has to tell me who's got bigger than me.
She will, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Yep, so there's no one raising their hand for public comments at this time.
Thank you. All right, Linda.
Yes.
Going to have it this time. Fiscal Year 23. Special update.
Mic goes on. All right, so, um, we, we, we try and each year visit what went right or wrong last year, or what could be improved on, and, and I'd really like to be able to come to you quarterly to tell you where we are with the revenues and expenses. And for those who have board docs, the schedules that we are going to be looking at tonight are on, are on board docs. And I will just, I know I've got, I know we've got a 6:30 hearing, so I'm going to move through, and it's not a lot of detail, but let me explain what this is. I keep a report that, and this was on the general funds, which show our revenues to date. The current year FY '23 is in the, are in the green blocks to the left. We're doing it, uh, we're comparing to FY '22, which are the center blocks, and FY '21, which are the pink blocks to the right. We thought it was important last year to have three years' worth, especially since we were coming out of COVID. If it feels like it's too crowded and too much information, and we just want to look one year back, that's okay, too. I'm always interested in hearing feedback, so that you're getting the right kind of information. Last year, we were doing this monthly and sending it, you were receiving it by email. I think that's entirely too much information, you don't know what are the important things are what are, and what aren't. When we do the revenues quarterly, then we know that within that quarter, we have received our quarterly payments from the state, um, there's been a round of real estate tax collections, uh, there's been one round of water and sewer receipts. So the, uh, it's much more significant to look at the wa, uh, the revenues as of the end of September, December, March, and June than it is to know what it is in October, or February, or, or middle of, of April. So, um, this, I hope, will, will give you more, uh, more important information, but fewer steps along the way. And then what I do with each of them, um, let me see if I, yeah, there it is, oh, hold it, okay, I'm going to use the, uh, this, but I don't know if it's on the camera. So following the yellow line across, that's where we are right now, the first quarter ending in September. Uh, real estate taxes, local receipts, and net state aid add up to the total of revenues, and then the, the last column in the green, um, for '23 are the total expenses. Now, along the bottom then, there are percentages, and I apologize, it says FY '22, but this is FY, that should be '23, and I'll correct it for next time. So we have our, where we are in each of those categories and in the totals. We're at roughly 25% with each one, which is just where you want to be at the quarter. I mean, really, uh, we're really doing fine. And this is compared to the percentages as to where we were at this point the year before. So if you follow through to the '22 column, at this point, last year, we were, uh, the 20, uh, the total revenues were at 24%, this year they're at 25. The total expenses, we were at 25.29, this year we're at 25.71. So if you want to know, well, what are the main points, what am I supposed to get, be getting out of this? That's what I put the notes in at the bottom. So the notes show the, the points on the revenue are that our, in each of our categories, we are either slightly ahead or very comparable with both FY '22 and FY '21, both with revenues and expenditures. And the last piece of information I have on the report, so that you always know where we are, whether we're going, you know, people are asking you, or we're going into a town meeting, and you just want to have a feel for where we stand. The last line, uh, the last section I have is on our free cash. Um, we were certi, uh, we'll start with what we were certified at, which was 1.75 million at the year end. Uh, we spent money at town meeting and following town meeting, if you follow over to the right, uh, we have $1.4 million remaining in free cash after our special town meeting. We will continue at that number until we get to annual town meeting. The number, our amount in free cash does not change between meetings, it changes at the meetings, because we, even if we were to get a lot of money in, and we said, we know we've got lots of extra money we weren't expecting, it's not ours until it's certified. So we're always starting with what we were certified in July 1. We're subtracting what we spent at town meeting, and we have to keep that money all the way up until the next, um, next certification, which is the end of the fiscal year. So that's the one on general funds, and I think I can spend a little less time on that next two, but just understand, the next one is the water, it's set up exactly the same way.
Can I just ask a quick question about that one?
Sure.
So on the local receipts in particular, where it looks like we're, we're running ahead of the prior years?
Mm-hmm.
Some of the local receipts are, are timed, so when you think about excise taxes, I mean.
That's on one of the sheets here.
Yeah.
I'm just going to ask about the timing, so is that?
It's in, yes, because the excise taxes come on the, uh, they're actually in the very same payment as the rooms, the rooms, the meals, and the cannabis excise taxes are paid quarterly, and they're paid on the last day of the quarter.
Okay.
So we received our first payment on September 30th, and we won't receive the next one until December 31. Another really big reason to not bother with what's, not, to take too much time with what's going on in between, because even though quarterly, we have about a quarter of the revenues, we're not going to have four twelfths of the revenues next month, and then five twelfths.
Right.
So, um, I, I think this hopefully gives you the, you know, the right information that you need.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Make good sense of the way you're presenting.
All right, and then, uh, the water is set up in the same way, um, with the, uh, the percentages. Once again, uh, my notes at the bottom will show that they're very comparable to FY '21 and '22. When I say comparable, just to be clear, it doesn't mean the dollar amount is the same. Each year, we do a projection as to how much revenue we're going to get, and what our expenses are going to be, that, for expenses, that's our, that's our budget. And then, so it's a percentage of those totals that are being compared from year to year. So if we got 25% of our revenue last year, and we're about 25, a little less, uh, no, 25% of our revenues this year, that means, that's a percentage. Dollar-wise, you'll see there, they might be a bit different, but this is based on our project, on our, a percentage of our projections.
So is FY '23 the only timeframe where we had a water ban in place?
Say it.
Did we have the water ban in place in the prior years as well?
Yes. At least last year.
Was there last year?
And then.
We had a lot of rain, not this year, but we had a lot of rain last year, so I don't know.
I think it might have been every year in the last, like, four years.
Yeah, I don't know, that's why it's actually helpful to compare the, uh, the quarter to the quarter exactly a year ago, so that we're experiencing the same season, not necessarily the same water levels. It was lower last year, which is why, one reason our, our water receipts were down, and why going into this coming season, we had to lower the projections of the water and the sewer, particularly the sewer, based on what we received the prior year. So there we are, is this, uh, so that's the water one, again, we're very comparable, a little below in the revenues, um, uh, I don't think significantly below, I mean, we're really going to have a better idea of it in the next quarter. And again, at the bottom of the last item would be the water reserves. Uh, we started at 1.2 million certified, we spent money at town meeting, and we now have 1.133 million left after town meeting in water. The next chart is sewer, and, uh, for those, uh, to explain why these are set up separately, um, we have a water enterprise fund, which is, is self-sustaining, we have a sewer enterprise fund, which is self-sustaining, and the rest of the budget is paid out of general, so we don't lump it all together, we have, we have to treat these funds separately. The general fund is paid out of, um, our, our, our free cash and our receipt, our tax revenues, local receipts, and many other items, but water and sewer are just out of the receipts collected for those purposes. So that's the way, uh, did I do sewer yet? Okay, sewer is basically, okay. Did I? I forget, did I cover it? Okay, so sewer, there we are with the, uh, similar, I guess we're looking to be a little bit ahead in revenue, um, but still, what I would call fairly comparable at this time of year. Uh, it does look like expenses are down, but if you look at '22 and '23, we're at 13% of the year, but last year we were at, uh, almost 12, and a year before at almost 12%. It just happens to be where some of the expenses in that department lie. I can't tell you exactly why, but this is why we compare to prior years, because we have various expenses, um, that is true in all three of the budgets, we have certain times a year where, where we are hit a little bit heavier in expenses, and so the, um, the percentages will fluctuate. So, does that seem like a way, a good way to make these reports to you each time? Okay, good, good. And then I would like, I would like to add each time a fun financial facts section of the presentation, which is the excise tax comparison chart. And, I mean, this, this is just so interesting and tells us so much about really what's going on in Hadley. What, uh, what we did, and I say "we" because of my, uh, my, this was on a weekend, and my husband and, um, and I did this together, because we were talking about the excise and how we compare to the other towns, and so we went right to the website and pulled the information out. Um, and we all know how, that, we always talk about how we get a lot of our money, and a lot of our funding comes out of the excise tax, our businesses. That specifically is businesses, so that all understand, we have three kinds of excise tax that we get money back on it. One is meals, one is our rooms, which is our hotels, motels, and the third is, is cannabis, uh, which is fairly recent, for all towns, it's fairly recent, obviously, it's only been a couple of years. Um, we know it's a high percentage in Hadley, we know we, we, that, that's a good figure for us, and we know we experienced a real drop in this during COVID. What I honestly didn't, um, realize is, when we compare to the cities and towns around us, how much more significant it is to Hadley than to the other towns. And it, and it really is. When you look at our total for the year for Hadley, which, as you see at the top, we have a population of 5.3, um, yeah, a little over 5,000. We have a budget of 21.5 million. We receive from, in FY '22, uh, 1.47 million dollars in excise tax. That's a lot, that's about 7% of our total revenues that's going into supporting our budget. Uh, if you drop, uh, the, the lower section shows just the first quarter of '23, we've already received 480,000. If you look to Amherst, and this is, this is just a fact, and this is not, you know, to Hadley's credit, or I'm not criticizing any other towns, this is just to see where we stand as opposed to them. When you look at Amherst, we're, we're almost, almost double. I mean, the, the Amherst is obviously a lot larger population and budget, and for FY '22, they took an 810,000. We like to.
It's only 1% of their.
Um, yes, less than 1%. And Hatfield and Sunderland are also closer to a half percent of their total, uh, budget, that they receive from meals and rooms, and, and they don't have, uh, the cannabis business. Um, we like to think of ourselves, we're Hatfield and, and Hadley are kind of sister towns in some ways, um, and always have been, however, that, that our business district is so significant to the impact of not only our revenues, but also to our budget, and helps to explain for those who wonder why our police or fire or highway, why our departments are so much larger than what we think of as comparable towns. This is why. Um, it's, it's, this is not just revenue figure, this is evidence of the, the success of the businesses in, in our town. So if you look at something like our meals tax, the, that's, um, we're collecting, oh, this past quarter 120,000, but for the year 444, that is going to fund our budget, then we also have to provide the services that do the permitting, the inspections, um, and anything else that, that it might entail, and this is true of our rooms and cannabis as well. All, the, the success of these businesses means revenue to the town, but it also means we in turn have to put a certain amount of money back in to the services required of these businesses. Um, so, I, I, I just, I just really think this is amazing. One other thing I want to point out about this is, um, people often ask about, well, what happened to our ARPA money? And we said, well, we put it into revenue replacement, didn't everybody? Um, no, they didn't. We had such a drop, um, we were impacted more significantly than the towns around us in the drop in the rooms and the meals excise taxes. Um, I, I looked back to, uh, and fiscal 19, uh, fiscal 19, we had taken 1.2 million dollars in from, um, meals and rooms, it was at the time, and that dropped to 750,000 in FY '21. That's a drop of over 500,000, and we happened to have put in as revenue replacement the 500 and, was it 500? 580,000, almost, from our can, uh, from our ARPA funds to directly handle our revenue replacement funds. Um, we receive ARPA based on our population, we spent our ARPA faced, based on, um, the revenue replacement that we needed in order to continue to maintain the services that, that these businesses still required, in spite of their lower income and in spite of the lack, in fact, needed in some cases, stepped up attention from us, and as we all worked together to try and, uh, come up with various solutions to keeping them in business. So, um, so there's that, that, there's that part of it, too. And I just thought that this would be, um, not only just interesting to you, but also help you in answering some of these questions that I know we get, and you probably do, too. Um, we only got a bit more than a one and a half million dollars in ARPA funds, we spent 580,000 one year, and we used 400,000 the next in the revenue replacement. We had very little left over after that, and so we certainly are aware that there are towns who are saying, wow, we're going to spend this extra money, and, and they're able to, um, put, put it in, to put it into some very creative uses, and I think that, I wish that we had that capacity as well, but hopefully this helps explain Hadley's situation, which as always is unique. We all, you know, there's nothing quite like Hadley, we say that over and over again, and here it is, it's true.
And I think, you know, something to bear in mind as we get into, um, the budgeting season, too, when people are coming forward, because I think to your, to your point, you know, the point you're making is that, you know, we have building inspections, we have fire police support, you know, we always say we're a city by day, we're a sleepy little, you know, village at night. Um, but in order to keep that revenue coming in, we need to make sure that we're getting the inspections done and doing that, and that we're staffed adequately.
Right.
To make that all happen, which we all know right now we're beyond stretched, so.
Yep, and, and I'd like to just on a personal note, say that I think one of the amazing things about Hadley is that so many of us continue to think of us as a small town, and we are a small town, and we've got the, the, the farms and, and the other aspects of the, of being a small-town community. Um, and we have this happening down Route 9, and we're still able to maintain both, so I don't see all of this business as changing, Hadley. We're trying to think of this in terms of, we have kind of, we've got two things going on, this is expanding Hadley's identity, while we're trying to keep the old and keep up with the new, which, um, face it, is funding a lot of what is subsidizing our ability to remain the kind of community that we want to be.
I think these numbers, the way you presented them, are very useful, thank you, and I look forward to quarterly reports.
Okay, very good.
Any other comments?
No, just did a great job, Linda, thank you very much.
Awesome.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, it's almost time for our 6:30 hearing.
Is he zooming? Must be, he's not here.
Uh, yes, Benjamin Coyle is here, but we do need to wait, uh, three, three whole minutes.
Okay.
Before we start it.
Jim's here, can we do parking rec in three minutes?
I think that's going to be longer than three minutes.
Yeah.
You do?
You could do the DPW feasibility committee appointments, that would take.
Yeah, that would be really quick.
Okay. Feasibility committee appointment.
We have a full committee to appoint. In addition to who you appointed at the last committee meeting, we have Walter Chikowski and Jim Maxmaski, who are interested in being a part of the DPW building feasibility study.
So moved. I'll have a motion in a second. I think those are great additions to the committee.
That is what I've heard.
And good representation from the town.
I agree.
Any further discussion?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
We only have two minutes to come. Y'all were too fast.
Don't beat around the bush.
Jane, if you just want to let her know that the Hadley Housing Authority is not going to be on the agenda.
The Hadley Housing Authority was put on the agenda because we had not heard when they wanted to meet with us, but we are not going to be talking about the Hadley Housing Authority tonight. So that is removed from the agenda.
All right, I'm going to sit, twiddle our thumbs for two minutes.
Special town meeting recap, take a long time?
Yeah, that's a long, that's a conversation. All right, I will make one announcement now, while we have people's attention. The Russell School Committee is going to be having a forum here at the Senior Center on the 14th of November at 6:30 in the evening to talk about, um, why they're doing their survey and answer questions. 6:30 here.
We might be done with ambulance committee?
Probably, yeah. If we start at 5:00.
It's almost 6:30.
Almost only counting horseshoes.
It's true.
We need Stevie the comedian to be here, to entertain us.
Or Cornhole, one of the two.
Did you see that there is a Cornhole scandal in particular, Cornhole?
Yes.
No.
The people cheated.
Oh, no.
First fishing, now Cornhole.
Nothing sacred, okay, it is 6:30.
6:30, all right, who's open the hearing for the change of location?
Jennifer?
Yes, um, so, uh, Parmark Beverage is asking for a change of locations from their Hadley Farms Meeting House to their Homewood Suites, um, which is 340 Russell Street, and their attorney Benjamin Coyle is here, and he can speak to it, and I believe that Chief Spank Abel and myself also have a couple of other things, but I'd like to let Ben start, and it looks like Shargul is popping on right this moment.
Okay, great. My name is Benjamin Coyle, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Bacon and Wolf, and represent the applicant, Parmark Beverage LLC. As Jennifer indicated, this is a change of location from 24 Bay Street in Hadley to 340/350 Russell Street. I know that the, the town has the, the assessment office has it at 350 Russell Street. Um, this is simply a change of location from the current location to the Homewood Suites. It's going to be business as usual, just like it was at the other location, it's to provide alcohol at the, at the location for the meeting room that's there, as well as the, um, the patrons who are staying at the facility. There is not going to be a separate bar, it's going to be for sale at the, the front desk, it's going to be stored and secured at the facility as well. The intent is to have it available for the meeting rooms as well, when there's functions in, in the meeting room on the first floor of the facility. Did provide the.
Stop, we're having a hard time hearing you here in the, in the room, so I'm going to ask you to pause for just a moment. Thank you.
Yeah, it was coming in and out.
Ben, could you do a test for us again?
Sure, can you hear me now?
Much better.
And I'm going to ask that you, you repeat yourself, because we were not able to hear everything that you were saying.
Okay, my apologies, I'm not sure. This is a change of location from the current location at 24 Bay Street to 340/350 Russell Street, the Homewood Suites. This is, uh, the intention is to run the operation very similar to the prior operation, it is to be ancillary in nature to the, the facility at Homewood Suites. It's to provide patrons with the ability to have alcohol as per the prior license. It is not to establish a bar there, there's not going to be a separate bar, it's going to be stored, and. It's going to be stored and secure at the facility. It's for patrons who are at the facility and for use in the meeting room when they have events in the meeting room as well. It is not the main focal point, but it will be an addition to the services that are offered at the facility. Everything else is going to remain the same there, and we're just looking for approval to change the location. Can you answer any questions that you might have as well?
Can you explain, oh, sorry. Can you just be a little bit more clear on you saying that there's no bar? You know, so I'm thinking about going to hotel, okay, I get that part, but that you say it will be available? So how would people, if somebody wants it in their room, do they go to the front desk and ask for it, or?
Yes, that's exactly what would happen. You would be able to call the front desk or stop at the front desk for purchase, and then it would also be available for those functions that are happening in the meeting room at the facility as well.
Now, the alcoholic beverage license does not cover that.
Does not cover what?
It doesn't cover taking the alcohol to the room.
I believe that this is a hotel license, and that it does cover the consumption in the rooms should the board allow it to.
The previous license did cover it going, the license included all of their hotel rooms. I do have concerns about the fact that I don't think this is just a change of location. Hadley Farms Meeting House was an event space, and they did have a bar at their location. I'm worried about who is serving the alcohol? Are all of the front desk workers going to be serve safe? And also, who is serving the alcohol when you have events in the meeting spaces? Because when they had events at Hadley Farms Meeting House with a full bar, there was a bartender who was serve safe certified. So I'm wondering, will you have a serve safe certified bartender at all events where you intend to serve alcohol within Homewood Suites?
Yes.
Hi, Shardul. Hi, yeah, all of our bartenders at events will be tip certified. Our managers are at the facility, and everybody else are serve safe certified and will be tip certified also. That's just the way we've always done it, even at the Hampton.
I just want to clarify something, because I mean, I've been on plenty of business trips, and I've seen very similar operations. When it comes to purchasing from behind the front desk, you're selling in full bottle quantities, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Like, they sell, like, so if when it comes to alcohol, like, they would sell, like, a bottle of wine on opens? So that's, I mean, I've experienced that, like, a lot in my travels across country, but you're not, they're not selling open containers, and they're not mixing cocktails or anything for, right?
No, those, we would set up essentially a portable bar in the meeting room for those occasions, but not at the front desk.
So for a single, for like a single-room occupancy individual, you would only be selling closed containers if they opened themselves in their rooms?
Correct.
So as a guest, I couldn't get a gin and tonic on a hot day?
No.
Okay.
No. And essentially, it's the current operation, even though Hadley Farms is no longer operation, we've operated this without any issue throughout, since we've been licensed. So we've been doing, we've been doing this since we were, we've been, were awarded a license when we opened Hadley Farms, and have in the past operated the hotel and sold and done everything, again, without any issue. We're just, in terms of right now with Hadley Farms, with the difficulty reopening right now, we do have a meeting room at the Homewood Suites that is quite busy, and we do get many requests for alcohol on the site. So that hotel, and the nature of the hotel, it just lends itself to have alcohol license at the facility.
So this is asking us to take one license and let it cover both hotels?
No.
No.
So you're not going to offer it at the Hamptons?
No, no, we would not, no. This would be transferring it to this hotel, essentially replicating what we were doing in Bay Road to what we're doing now at the Homewood site.
Bay Road.
Correct.
Just to, I just wanted to clarify for anyone that might be listening in, when it comes to purchasing from behind the counter, individuals looking to do so would have to provide a room key or evidence that they are staying there, right?
That is correct, yeah, and ID, obviously.
Okay. I have one more question. Shardul, at this time, y'all don't have a common vicular for the Homewood Suites, and I did not receive an application for that. It sounds like y'all might be serving food there occasionally?
And just to clarify that, I did complete that today and submit it, Jennifer. You'll be getting the original copy tomorrow in the packet. I did have Shardul complete that today.
Yeah, in the past, we've been, we've had catering, but once we have this, and a lot of the other food that we do serve is kind of an extension of our breakfast food. We're really not doing any lunch or preparing anything for lunch or dinner, things like that. Right now, we're just extending what we do offer at the, kind of at our breakfast items, which are just pre-cooked, everything is kind of comes in boxes, and we warm it up.
Okay, so we probably should have had a common vicular all along. I was under the understanding you were not serving food there at all. So I'm glad that that's taken care of, and we'll get that issued at the meeting on the sixteenth.
Okay.
Mike, you had some questions?
Hi, Shardul.
Hi.
Just a question, will this be extended to outside of the building? Will you be extending it for like tents out in the back or anything like that?
There is a patio area outside that, outside of the meeting room area, that, so would be extended out there. Other than that, we don't plan on doing tents and things like that. We haven't, I don't believe we've ever done any large events. We're trying to keep it simple and small in the general area of the meeting room right now.
And I believe you saw the comments from the police chief, were just concerned about if it's going back to the room, that it's, you know, that there is going to be security involved with that transaction to make sure that it's not being handed off to folks. So I know you can't follow them back to their room, obviously, but if we could just be cognizant of that, and is there a limit on how much a patron can purchase, a guest can purchase? And is it, I seem to remember the Homewood Suites, that wasn't actually behind the counter, it was in a little small shopping area that you would open up a cooler and bring it to the counter. Is that how this is going to be set up, or will this all be secured behind the counter? Because it sounds like you're talking about, I'm assuming it's only going to be beer and wine, or are you actually offering up hard alcohol as well as part of the?
At the front desk, it'll just be beer and wine.
So the vents would have the full bar set up?
Right, the vents would be separate. And in terms of volume, we don't typically stock it, we don't stock much in there. Usually, it's just one, kind of one row in the bottom, and we probably have maybe a dozen items most of the time. We try not to, it's not something that we're looking to make it into a store.
Looking at the application, it does not mention the patio on the application. It mentions the pool area, but I believe the pool is inside, I've not been in there. So the patio is not mentioned in this, so that would not be a part of the liquor license.
Okay.
I can update the description with the board's approval.
Right, if you update the description, I do feel since it's going outside, it becomes a matter that you have to notify the butters again. So we would need to continue to hear if we notify the butters again if we're going to have an outside premise.
What, if we see the way that it is now, and if we want alcohol to be served outside, we could always do an expansion of the licensed premises to include the patio in the future, would that be acceptable?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That would be separate to the four.
Yep, perfect.
Since we're going into winter, and it probably won't be used.
You're not, you're not going to head out there anytime soon, that is correct. So those are the concerns that have been brought to me by the fire chief, the police chief, and myself. We just want a clarification that, are some of those things just come out in a meeting that don't come out so easily in an application? So at this time, I would recommend the application is complete, and I would recommend, with your pleasure, to approve it, the change of location.
So make a motion to approve subject to satisfactorily, satisfactory response from the Palmer family to any conditions or questions that were raised by public safety and building inspections?
I have a second by Amy. Motion by Molly. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I have to abstain from ours, a client of mine.
Thank you. Is that four to one? Four to one.
Thank you, Ben and Shardul.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. All right, and it is six forty-four. Good timing.
Perhaps I could go ahead and introduce everyone, if you group up here at six forty-five?
Sure.
I see that Attorney Tom Miller is here for Pride, and Attorney James Channing are both here for the Pride. This will be, oh, it's six forty-five, this will be a change of owner and a change of beneficial interest. And Jim or Tom, which one of y'all would like to take it?
You guys get to hear from me tonight. Good evening, Madam Chair, members. My name is Tom Miller from McDermott Colty Miller in Boston, here on behalf of the licensee, Pride Operating LLC, and their application, as mentioned, for change of ownership and change of officers and directors. As also mentioned, Jim Channing is here with us, in-house counsel for the licensee, and we're also joined by Attorney Maury Bricks, who is general counsel for GPM Investments. For a brief overview of this transaction, the licensee is currently owned by Pride Holdings LLC, which is owned by Pride parent. We're applying to transfer the beneficial interest in Pride Holdings from Pride parent to GPM Investments. GPM is a wholly owned subsidiary of Arco Corporation, a publicly traded company. While we're here, you know, while we're here tonight because of these changes, there will be no difference in the day-to-day operations of the licensee for this store on Russell Street. The store manager and manager of record will not be changing. Both Jim Channing and Marsha Bedina, the LLC manager, have been with Pride for a number of years. They stayed on during previous transitions, and will be staying with the licensee after this transition as well. The board and customers will see no difference in the way the stores are run day-to-day. GPM is an experienced operator with over a thousand licenses in different jurisdictions across the country. They understand the responsibilities of holding this type of license. They look forward to the opportunity of entering this new market in Western Mass. The application for a change of officers and directors is, simply reflects the proposed change in ownership from Pride parent to GPM. As the board is aware, the ABCC has conducted a preliminary review of these applications, and is satisfied, subject to your approval of the overall transaction. As I've said before, this is simply a transfer of the beneficial interest in the licensee with no change in the way that the stores are run. We want to thank you for hearing this application tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions you have.
I was just going to confirm, this is just the single Pride, that's the large one, the newer one built on the west side of town, has nothing to do with the one on the east side of town?
It's the one on Russell Street.
They're both on Russell Street.
They are both on Russell Street, oddly enough, but yes, this is the first Pride right over the bridge. Yes. Sorry, Russell Street's a very big street town, and they just run straight through it.
I understand.
But yes, that's the one that's the liquor license.
Are there any other questions?
So the ABCC did review this because they have so many holdings in the Commonwealth. It's already been approved. I did the research on the change of ownership, they're registered with the Commonwealth, so I do recommend that y'all approve this.
Does this also, the liquor license go with this also?
Yes, this is for the liquor license. It'll transfer to the new parent company, and it'll be, y'all won't really, as he said, nobody's going to really notice the difference, it'll just be a paperwork on our side.
Second motion by Amy, second by Joyce. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? Passes.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Greg.
Should we invite Jen in as well?
Yeah.
Come on in.
No, I was talking to Jim.
How's everybody?
Very well.
Good.
So, before I ask for anything, I want to thank Joyce. She gave up about five or six hours on Sunday to help us do the ragshag, and we really appreciate it. We need a lot of volunteers, because we haven't had that many people come, apparently, in a long time. So thank you for helping make it the success that it was, so we appreciate the help.
Of course, your mother and I always have a good time, so it's always good. But the thing of it is, is that you guys also did a great job. I mean, it was so well put together, so decorated, the fire and the police, everybody just, it was a great event this year.
It was. We couldn't have done it without the fire and police department blocking the intersection.
Yeah.
That's important.
It would have been a nightmare. We had way more people than I expected.
Yeah, so it's great, so these things are growing, and so just a reminder to everybody, it's so nice to have Park and Rec, there are only three commissioners. So keep in mind that it's always good to say, hey, I got a couple of hours, you need some help. Sometimes that's all it needs and takes. You don't have to do a whole lot, but just sometimes, you know, volunteer, it doesn't hurt.
We had some National Honor Society and some...
Girl Scouts?
Girl Scouts.
Yeah.
And we couldn't have done it without them either. I mean, we had a lot. Greg coordinated everything, so.
Yes, did a great job.
We just gave up some time to help, but Greg did everything, and he did a great job.
Yeah, it was super.
Thanks.
So, I'm here to ask all of you folks, let me lay it out first, I spoke with Greg Mish, or Jeff Mish today. And he said that he had absolutely no problem with the way it went last year with the skating rink. You know, two weeks after, three weeks after, we took it up, you couldn't even tell that it was there. That kind of needs to change this year, and that's why I came to speak to you folks. So the way the land is currently, it's sloped a little bit. So we had twelve inches of ice at one end and four at the other. And with that happening, the ice didn't form properly with only the four inches, and people were skating, and they were stepping through and actually cutting the liner. And I went out multiple times to try and fix the liner and put more water in to Noah Bell. So what I'm asking for you guys, and I have Jeff's permission, and he said it's not going to be a problem, so we need to level it out a little bit, so it's, you know, closer than eleven inches, twelve inches on one end and four on the other. And I just need your approval for that.
Can you just describe what you need to do, Jim?
So what we're going to do is scrape the grass off, and then put a little bit, and it's going to be about a hundred and five by sixty-five-ish, because the skating rink is going to be same size it was last year, fifty-eight by ninety-eight. That's just the way the board's worked out. And so we would have some dirt brought in, just a little bit, not, it's not going to be a huge mound out there like a, you know, one of those mounds for a septic tank or something. It's just going to be raised up a little bit, so we can get it a little more level. But it's also still going to be pitched, so the water runoff will go towards that drain. the water runoff will go towards that drain that's over there.
And what will you do about the outside surface of the rink where you have raised it up? Are you, are you raising up or lower?
We're going to raise it up a little bit.
Okay, so.
It'll just be a gradual slope. It's not going to be a step.
Okay, so you're going to, beyond the boards of the rink, you're also going to grade out.
Yeah, so it'll grade out a little bit. So we're, I mean, you're going to notice it when you drive by. There's absolutely no, I'm not going to tell you, you're not going to notice it. Next spring, when we grow grass, you're going to see, but if you look at that field, it goes like this and there's dips and valleys and everything else. So it, it will be noticeable, but the water will still drain towards the.
The drain.
The drain. Yeah.
And then who's going to do the work, Jim? Is school going to pitch in or is this?
I've got a buddy that's going to do the work with his equipment from, he didn't want to be mentioned, I don't think. He's just doing it for free. So they're not, he's not charging Park and Rec. He's just going to do it on his own time on a Saturday or Sunday.
Where the material is going to come from?
I don't know that yet. We haven't gotten that far because i- i- if we can get somebody to give us the fill local, that's what we're going to do, but I have to use loan because I need to plant grass there.
Right.
I think we still have some loan down at DPW from the projects here, but I don't know.
Yeah.
We could check with them.
Yeah, check with Scott.
See if DPW has some extra loan hanging out down there.
You know, unless they need it for another ground.
Tell me, tell me we sent you.
Okay.
What is the field used for other than a skating rink? I know there used to be a softball field there. Is it, that's no longer the case? So it's just.
Nothing. They, they mow it and that's it.
Okay.
The baseball field's gone, they ripped down, or softball field is gone. They ripped down all the backstops and the fencing along Route Nine and it's, I don't think they really use it for anything.
Got a lot of use out of it when it was cold and you had good ice there last year.
Yes, it was, it was very well used.
Using it.
We saw a lot of people, it made a couple of different websites too that.
Yeah.
Where they advertised skating. I don't know how that happened, but I think people just put it on there themselves.
Yeah.
But it was a big hit. We got, we had a lot of talks about it last year.
Yeah, it was good.
And Home Depot said that they would love to, you know, help out again this year. I mean, we have everything. Last year, the only thing that we have to repurchase is.
The liner.
The liner because it got cut up so bad last year. And we're, instead of doing a generator on Friday and Saturday nights, we're going to get some.
LED.
Solar lights that we can put in concrete so we can move them in and out. And then we, I had to bring my wife's Jeep there. I had to bring my wife's Jeep there and chain the generator to the, to the Jeep so it didn't get stolen, so I could leave it there without, you know, being there. But it worked, it worked great last year and so that's kind of what we plan on doing again, but we're going to do their solar street lights is what they look like.
So will we have, maybe it's a question for Carolyn. So if we are having somebody come in and do work like that, will there be liability coverage in case anything?
So I was just going to say, I think we have a meeting with, with you, myself and Greg on, on another project.
Yep.
I think it would be a good question because even though it's a volunteer, there's still a couple of things that have come up in this conversation that we can go over.
Okay.
Because we probably have to bring in a couple of other departments. So.
Okay.
Yeah. So, but we have a meeting scheduled for the 14th because that, nothing's going to freeze by then, right?
No.
Okay. So if you're okay with that, members, I would like to just, there's a couple of other departments I'd like to bring into that conversation.
So can we make an approval tonight or, excuse me, can we make a recommendation tonight, subject to?
Yes, that would be great. Greg, are you okay with that?
Yeah, it sounds great.
Okay.
Do you, are you going to need any help with the determining your, your elevations?
I've got another local contractor that's coming with a laser level and everything else to help me with that.
Okay, then I won't offer my services.
Well, you want to offer, we'll take it.
Trying to supervise.
Because I'm kind of, he's under my thumb a little and he said he'd do it if, you know.
Well, if you need the help.
Okay.
Do you know who I am?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Please, please say in the right context.
Even though he's messed up, he knows who you are.
Well, he's got his name in front of him.
Yeah, well, do you know what business I want to talk about? All right, I'll be happy to help.
Done my house multiple times.
Okay, I'll be happy to help.
I appreciate it.
All right. So motion to approve the request from Park and Rec for the ice rink changes this year, subject to, again, satisfying whatever issues come up in the meeting that Carolyn referred to.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Hold on. Mr. Spangable has a question.
I am going to need water and I, again, more people, we couldn't have done it without. I mean, it's tough. Park and Rec doesn't have a lot of resources, but luckily we have Chief Spangable and Chief Mason and all these other people that have helped us out over, you know, my few years with Park and Rec, but they filled the rink for us and then topped it off a couple of times last year.
Yes, absolutely. Could be like my father-in-law back in the day. He just went down and opened up the hydrants at the school and flooded the fields.
Okay, moving right along.
That's a motion made.
Well, that was back in the day when those things happened in town. I just wanted to give you a little history on previous ice skating rinks.
If we flooded those fields now, I think we'd be in a little bit of trouble.
I think we would be too. All right. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Aye. No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Thank you.
You got it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't forget your son out there.
No.
He's so quiet. Special employee policy and designation.
Okay.
Did Mike want to go on?
Huh?
Did Mike have anything else tonight?
No, I think he's trying to sneak out, but that didn't happen.
Oh. Bye, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
This, we have an employee who is working part-time for the DPW as well as fills in as a bus driver when he's not working. This is, this is Dennis Pachinsky, who is now down to very part-time at the DPW, but is someone who they get called, they call in for a sub-bus driver. So according to the Ethics Commission, you have to designate one of those positions as what's called a special municipal employee designation. So you're not, you're not authorizing Dennis for that. You're actually authorizing that position to be a special municipal employee designation. So I just need a vote for that.
What is the purpose, what is the purpose of that? I mean, what does it get? Why do we have to do it?
Because the Ethics Commission told us.
Yeah. It's, it's in regards to an employee working for two separate departments for the same town.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's like double dipping, only it even happens when you volunteer. Yeah.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Amy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Carolyn?
Yeah. So believe it or not, the budget season is about to begin. Technically on paper, I have it beginning yesterday. But, so in the next couple of weeks, we will be sending out the budget requests and the templates that Linda helps with. So what I'd like to do is, it was really successful last year when the select board granted me that ability to just say, departments, what do you need? And they were extremely responsible, extremely aware that they, they weren't presenting a wish list, they were presenting what they needed. And, and not a lot of the departments had an actually large increase outside of, if there was a salary contract. So I would really like to, you know, that our, we're kind of recuperating, but not fully from COVID and then the impacts of that, and I put that in that memo to you. But my recommendation is we, we are good with free cash right now, better than we've been in a long time. And I would like to move forward and present that same request to the department heads that present to me, what do you need to provide services to, to serve the residents of Hadley? And if there's a, a new service that you wanted to add or an addition, that they had to prevent, they're going to have to provide a narrative and data, which they did last time. They were extremely responsible and they were very good when I met with all of them. If I felt that something, this wasn't the right time, or I was weighing other increases that I knew were going to be coming down the road, they were, they were very understanding and we even brainstormed about consolidating positions and things like that. So that is my request is that that would be an, an approach that would, we could do again for fiscal year twenty-four.
Carolyn, could I just, the only question I have, I mean, it seemed to me, just from knowing how it had been done in years past where the select board would say, you know, no more than five percent or level, whatever, and dictate it upfront, this seems to work so much better because the department heads are the ones that know. But then there might be items that, you know, and I'm going to use this as an example. So at one point, the select board had supported trying to put a planner, I think it was a halftime position years ago, right? Now, the department heads wouldn't necessarily be suggesting that. So if there are items like that, that, you know, maybe we're thinking we might like to talk about, how, how do you want us to handle it? Should we talk to you individually? Do you want to have the select board have a discussion about some of the, just that kind of stuff?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. You know, I'm, I'm not sure how you want to, what's the, what would be the best?
Well, the boards, I think, too, would, I mean, you're asking the departments, but I think in asking the elected boards what they might need.
Well, when I say, when I say department heads, I'm, I'm, I'm including, it goes out to the boards and committees as well.
Yeah.
Yes.
At one point, the departments gave a strengths and weaknesses report, which I found very useful because a lot of, a lot of the different departments do things that we're not all aware of. And that was, that really helped us focus on what they thought they could do better or what they were doing well. What was that called?
So that's a SWOT analysis?
SWOT analysis.
And I know that that was done a few years ago.
Yeah, that was really useful.
I think the challenge, the challenge is, is did we follow it? And I don't know that we have on those results. So, and, and things have changed. If, if you're asking to do that now, I would rather not during budget site, budget season. That, that is a real, there's a lot of work that goes into that and, and you do need a facilitator help with that.
Well, some of the, some of the departments actually use that. They've actually carried it forward and they use it to help them develop their budgets. But there are many department heads who are brand new that didn't go, go through that process when it was done previously. You know, like the council of aging director is new and, you know.
Go there, please, not tonight.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying that for, I think some of the, like, I know Chief Mason, that he, he looks at that and that helps inform him on how to do his budget. So I know what Carolyn's saying though, if we have people who've never done it before.
And we're looking at bench strength too. It's a lot easier. And I'm not saying easier that there's so much more staffing in a bigger department, but your three larger departments have more staff to be able to put that together. So just that I'm asking them to do the budget. I mean, it's up to you how you want to move forward with that, if you have positions that you want to.
I don't want to do the SWOT analysis again. No. I just think it, it helps departments really think about what they're doing and why.
I think they do do though, Jane, I really do. I think that, what I have found since I've been here for two and a half years is how well the departments do. Number one, with, with not, in my opinion, in my observations, I think Molly touched on it and Linda touched on it, not enough staffing, that I think they have done remarkably well analysis of their own departments. I, I don't see any significant, as, as, because I spend so much time with our departments and I hear the, the challenges and I hear the pleas for help in some, in a few of these departments, that I, I do think they have a good handle on their budgets. I.
I guess what I'm asking, and, and I understand it's a lot of work, but it also lets the select board hear there, please, more directly than, I need a new position or I need a halftime position, because this is what we have been trying to do for four years and finally, if we get this position, we'll be able to do that. That's what they do with their needs. When they ask for our requests, they tell us that's why they are asking for what they're asking for.
Yeah, I kind of feel like that's my responsibility as a town administrator to know what those concerns are and to then, and to share those with you.
All right.
Certainly, you know, if you want to look at the SWOT analysis, I would like to look at the old ones and see how they panned out and really see, because I, I, I think it's important that I see day-to-day how stretched some of these departments are. And I am concerned about adding another project during this, during the budget cycle to do that. And I just, if you look at what was accomplished last year with their requests and the, the, how we were able to, to balance that budget and provide extra support, I, I just think it, it just, it worked well for them. There was a low level of frustration. And again, because I'm with them all day long, with, with many of them I'm with all day long. But I certainly am open to taking a look at that SWOT analysis to see, did, you know, was it, did it help, was it, was it additional help to what, what is being done now?
Okay.
To Jane's point, I would assume that you are asking the questions. If somebody comes to you and says, we need X, you will ask, why do you need that?
So that is, so because I've been through it on the other end, on the other side as a department head, I, I absolutely, and when I meet with them, we literally have gone line item by line item to, what's, what's going on in that budget? What, how's that providing service and, and is it accurate? Let's look at the past few years. Have you used that amount? And if they haven't, we said, well, then I think we probably need to lower that line item. But also, when I'm looking now, it was, what was either, there wasn't enough money in an item last year, or there was a lot left over. That helps me in my analysis when I meet with each department head. So we go over all of that. And that is, that is the value of me meeting and getting into the weeds with them. So, and they have been very good about saying, no, you know, you know, you're right. Let's, let's lower that line item and see how we do next year. Is there a couple, a couple that I kind of probably slimmed a little bit too much last year? Yes. But that is, there's no other way to know. But.
Yeah. So I, I think there would be good, once you've done that, then at some point you come back to us and say, this is where we're at with this department and this is why.
It's kind of what I do when I present the budget to you, but if you want a deeper level of that with a more of a summary.
I think that's what Jane was asking for. That's what it sounds like to me.
That would do it. Because you already have the information.
Do you see it different than when I present the budget and go over each department? Because that's kind of what I'm doing.
Well, you, you're giving us the, the synopsis. You're not giving us the, where you were in the weeds with them, so to speak. So, and, and it may not be necessary to go through every individual thing. Maybe if we just have a question that you can answer.
Yes, we have questions we can ask. I think if they present, and what they've done in the past, because I've seen enough budgets go through this place, that they present to us what their needs are. And again, you can say to them, or she, Carolyn will show us exactly why is that need now or what's different from the past. So you don't have to actually go through everything all at once when they're presenting things that they need. You kind of know what their budget is right now because we've been through it for a year with, with it present, with having been on board at least this amount of time. And so that, them presenting what their needs are for the coming year kind of gives you an idea in why they need it. So I think that gives you a pretty good idea of what the requests are.
No, I don't, I'm not suggesting that.
Well, I think you also have, you, you weren't here when I presented the last two years on the select board and that, that, so I'm trying to think what extra and maybe when you see that. But I will definitely keep in mind that you want more detail.
Also, when they go over, the, the finance committee meetings are open, which certainly served a good purpose when I first got on the select board, is going to the finance committee meetings and listening to them when they do their departments. It kind of gives you an idea of what they're looking for. And again, they're presenting what their needs are, where they've been. So, you know, they keep going over this and the redundant with everybody that they talk to about what their budget is and what their needs are for the coming year. So it does give you an idea without having to actually, I found it better not that they came in, you know, unless we had a real concern on, on what, why we can't fund it, you know, then we would have a bigger discussion on it for what their needs are.
Okay.
So going back to the question I posed, so, so I gave an example, just like what's on my mind right now. Fire, right?
Yes.
Fires, big time on, and your choice is as well. So how do we get to 24/7 fire department coverage? What does that look like? What's the timeframe? Staffing on multiple levels? We clearly don't have adequate staffing in multiple areas. I'm thinking about, you know, inspections, we've talked about that. The structure of town hall. No, sorry. Don't leak the witness. No. But, you know, within town hall, like what's working for you, what's not working for you? And do you want a different, does that mean a different configuration? We have this longevity issue, like we all know about. We, we, every year ticks off and we know more and more people are getting closer to retirement. So what's the staffing plan behind that, right? Because you pointed that out, Carolyn, before. I brought up the, I'll bring up the planner again. I brought up the, I'll bring up the planner again. I still think that that position would pay for itself. But that won't necessarily come out organically from the, from the departments moving up. And it sounds like that's more really with you from a leadership standpoint, so.
So, yeah, and you'll see that in my goals, because I'm going to go into that area of staffing in departments, because it's pretty much a good chunk of what I, what I do is, is identify where we, we have some true gaps, where we have stretched staff, the planner. Mike and I have already started discussions about it. And, and this is where part of it is helping me to change the culture with the staff as well, because when I, when I, and I'm, he'll probably like kill me for bringing this up, but when I asked him, and we were meeting last week, because we meet on a regular basis as well. And I said, you know, Mike, what's, what's 24 going to look like for you? And he goes, well, I don't think, we can't ask for more staff, right? We were told we couldn't. And I said, by who? So there is, and there is in the, the department's mind that they're not allowed to ask for more staff. So that is where you have seen increments in the past few years since I've been here, that there have been increments, but they are planned and they're thought out. But knowing that the ambulance is going to be coming on, yes, we're going to get revenue for that, but we still have to get staffing for that.
But you can only, you can only apply for the SAFER grant so many years in a row and be denied because we have too much money in our town. So basically, that's why you've been, you know, denied. But they're trying to rework that so that we can get two more firefighters, so that we can expand the fire department. And it's pretty sad that we have to depend on a grant to cover the necessities that we need here in town. Yes, it would be nice if we got that, but even two more firefighters with the SAFER grant would, you know, allow us, really doesn't cover us 24/7.
It doesn't.
And that's really something that this town needs to look at. And I've had more than, I can't tell you how many people have said that to me, that this is something now that, this is a time to do it. We need to really, we've taken care of police, we've taken care of other areas. We need to take care of the fire department. And I know we're trying to do that with the ambulance and of that nature, but that's a whole department that we really probably should be concentrating on. Is it the department that we have done capital planning on? And is that the department that's up for it this year? I don't know who's in the, in the queue. Who's in the queue this year for capital planning?
So, so when you, when you say.
So we're back rolling again?
Carolyn, before you came in, they, the Select Board had started a programmer, different departments or different.
Yep, I'm aware of that.
Had the, and so that ended, so it didn't go all the way through?
Yeah, and, and because of COVID, that cut, cut. So I, I would probably, I'm going to recommend a different approach in my goals for you. I, I think that things change quickly. So to say that a department is the next in line, they may not need it right now. So you know there is a working group that has a designation that I have asked support from, from finance and from capital to help in a true capital improvement plan. We're digging in deep, meeting with the departments so that we can really see a capital improvement plan, how it's funded, what's needed, and it's extending out five years. Because that's the hardest part. We can't just do it year to year. And David had a, an improvement plan. But I, I would really like to have some of the stakeholders, not just have it come from me. I think it needs to be from the stakeholders, that we can present it to you, finance and capital, obviously capital first as they, as they go through. But there should be less vehicle submissions for annual. So that, again, I feel like I'm going into my goals and stuff that I do, that I'll be preparing for you.
And that's, that's what we need to wait for and look for, for when you do present that, so we have a better idea of where our thoughts should be going and where we should be concentrating on.
And I think what you're saying is it's just, it's communication. I'm, I'm sitting here going, yes, 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 as you're talking. So I think it's just communicating of what, what, what I am working on and the discussions that I've had with the staff.
Yeah, and I didn't want to, you know, again, I also, sorts of thoughts swirling in my head, and I'm sure there are four other people up here who have the same thing going on. So just trying to figure out what, what was going to work best. And also, just because something's important to Molly doesn't mean that that's important to Joyce. Except for ambulance.
It's why I didn't, it's why I didn't want to put in, okay, everybody gets capped at one, just nothing over 1%. Well, that doesn't tell me, that, that puts in that mindset, I really need 2% of an increase to increase some services, but I can't ask because I've, I've been stopped at 1%. And all it does is suppress needs, it suppress planning, so that we don't know what funding we need, we're going to need in the future. So that's, that is why my request doesn't have a limit. But I have to tell you, I trust, you have amazing employees and amazing boards who, who have budgets, that they really are responsible and extremely thoughtful in what they present and the discussions that I have with them. Okay.
So I'm going to move that we allow you to take the same approach for your memo.
Do what?
Do what?
Maybe a motion for this, we have to move to let you do this, right?
No, I think, I think we can just.
Just a conversation.
Just suggest that our next conversation should be a more entailed detail of what you want to present to us, of what we're going to be looking at for.
I won't have it by the next meeting.
No, no.
That's fine.
No.
Yeah.
I, I was thinking more that as part of the budget preparation.
Yeah.
So that would be, like I usually do, present to you why certain departments need that, need the increase, because I would never submit something with an increase without some detail.
Your, your original request is to send out the draft or whatever to the departments and directions for them to get their budgets looked at and present to you what their needs are.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And then if there's anything that we're thinking about, we can just email you or sit down with you, so you have it in your head.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, this is a good approach.
Yeah, so Carolyn is looking for our approval to do what she did last year.
Yep.
So however, we have to get that across to her that we're good with it.
Go for it.
I agree.
I agree, do it.
We'll work on that motion. Just butt vote.
Yeah. Motion to approve Carolyn's draft here to get the budget started.
I already made the motion.
Yeah.
Second, second then. I don't know what you were making the motion for, but okay, I'll second it.
She was reading her letter.
Oh, that's what we're doing.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
Have a motion in a second.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who knows? All right. Code of Conduct.
Oh, we have the special town meeting recap, Jane.
Oh, is that ahead of this? I'm sorry.
No, you got the Code of Conduct first.
The Code of Conduct is before the town meeting.
Did I switch it?
I, I don't.
I'm reading my agenda.
Oh, mine's five point different.
Five point four, town Code of Conduct.
You just presented us with the Code of Conduct for all town employees and boards and yada, yada.
Five point four.
Yeah.
Yours doesn't say that?
Yada, yada?
So it definitely does not say yada, yada.
Just so you believe me.
Are you on board docs?
Unless I'm on, it has the exact same agenda.
All right, Carolyn, go ahead, present the board.
If you remember, several meetings back, I think probably one of the first ones that Jane chaired was talking about a Code of Conduct. And we had samples that we were looked at. But Maya happened to have one available that I think is very, I think it answers a lot of the things we were trying to say, what should go in it. And so I've included that. It's a template. I would love to have you guys take a look at it. And then at the next meeting, if this, if there's something that you want to add or something that you have questions about, to, to, to be able to bring those questions, unless you had time to read it and want, you know, it's up to you. But I didn't have any anticipation that you would adopt it tonight.
Yeah, I think we, we agreed on stuff like this. We would do like a first and a, and a second reading. So the only thing I wanted to, absolutely like, you know, this is something wanted for a while. And, but stumbled across something interesting today, because part of this talks about, you know, basically people kind of staying in their lane and roles and responsibilities. And I found some, we have the Selectmen's Handbook.
Right.
And then the Finance Committee has a handbook. And I was reading through the financial sections of it. And it's interesting, because some of that material is actually kind of in, in conflict. Like, you know, the Selectmen's Handbook says one thing, yet the Finance Committee Handbook says another thing. And so, I mean, it probably, I'm just wondering if part of this process, we should also maybe just have like a roles and responsibilities, just a quick overview to make sure we're all on the same page, too? Because that was.
I think this basically.
Eye-opening.
But I, but I think whatever we see in front of us here today, and I've read through it, it doesn't matter whether you have a handbook for Selectmen or a handbook for Finance. I think this covers anybody that is an elected official, is a volunteer, works in the town, does whatever. I think it's a blanket for anybody within the scope of the town. So I mean, whatever's in the handbook or the finance book, I think is out the window. And this just covers everybody for the Code of Conduct on that area of those books. That's what I'm saying. So I mean, if they have something else different than this in their book, or we do too, this should be the standard town policy for everything, period.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that.
So that we don't have to worry about what's in their handbook, what's in their handbook. This is just what we're going to follow, period.
I'm totally fine with that. And when we, we vote, I'll support that. I'm just bringing it up in that context, because it pointed out to me. And I say it because sometimes, you know, Carolyn and I've had a couple of conversations where Karen's like, well, we, that's, I don't think that that's right. And I'm like, oh, no, but we did it this way. And then, so just to make sure we're all on the same page, too, so that we're not stumbling over each other.
Yeah.
And like I said, I just happened to stumble across this thing in writing and I went, oh, this is interesting.
So I mean, when, when people are taking a look at this, if you don't want to vote on it tonight, I did cruise it and read it. I don't have a problem with it. So I mean, if people wanted to do this as a policy and you want to vote on it at the next meeting, that's fine with me also.
No, I've read it and I agree with what you've said, Joyce and Molly. It, it makes sense and it seems to cover all the bases that we need to cover.
Should be townwide, period.
Right.
So would the intent be to get, I mean, we would have to have Planning Board and Board of Health and.
Everybody.
Everybody.
School Committee right there, they would all have to.
No, we set the policy and the rules for the town, the Select Board.
Is that how it would work?
This would be a Select Board policy, which.
Select, okay, and it would be overarching, so they don't have to themselves adopt it.
It's for elected officials and appointed.
Okay.
Which really is everybody, including employees.
That's even better.
And is there, I don't see anything in it about, in, under the enforcement. There's the anti-harassment piece, but.
That's a, that's a separate, you mean enforcement in such, what do you mean?
If somebody doesn't, some person, staffer, volunteer, does not, does something that is totally against this Code of Conduct, what happens?
They can be, may vote to censor any employee or any member and then decline to reappoint in the case where they're appointed.
Who, who, who does that?
Well, it's like, you can like recalling a vote, right? Something like that.
You would probably hold a hearing at that point, because it's called.
Who would hold the hearing?
Well, we're.
We would, it's our policy.
Yeah, we're setting the policy, Jane, so we would be.
We would do so.
And what if one of us?
Well, it would be the respective board or committee. So, so if it happened on the Planning Board, then the language says the board slash committee shall then take such action as authorized. So.
Yeah, and it also, we, we, we have a present employee handbook that does, it, it impacts every volunteer, every elected official, every employee.
So that's a good reason why we should vote on it next time, just to make sure.
Do we need to have legal look at this, just because it says the information is general in nature and does not, and is not intended to constitute legal advice? You're advised not to take or to refrain from taking any action based on this information without consulting your legal counsel about the specific issues.
So this came from Maya?
This did?
Yeah.
So we're good?
So it, it did not come from our attorneys, but it's our risk management who are, it's.
They're good.
Reviewed by employees.
Okay.
Jane, you do have two hands up? It's up to you.
I was waiting for y'all, this is y'all's discussion. I was waiting for y'all to be done and then I was going to tell you.
Okay.
So who would like?
Susan had her hand up first.
Susan?
Hi, I think this was, this particular policy was adopted a number of years ago by the Select Board, along with a number of other policies that Maya had presented. I remember showing them to David and him bringing it to a former board. So these might already be adopted? Not, I, I'm not certain. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Did have a Code of Conduct that they put in place, but it was not this one?
It was a different one.
And then a prior.
This is much more.
Yes.
This, this covers, yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
The policy that was been placed was driven for Select Board only. And yes. And then Bill Twire has his hand raised.
Bill?
Hold on, Bill, you were muted, you need to unmute.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to the question of how, how you go about enforcing something like this. We had a situation a few years ago when a member of the Planning Board made some remarks that did not, were not well received. And we did go into executive session, discussed it, emerged, took a vote to disavow the comments, then went into open session and revealed that vote. So it's a mechanism, it's a route we've traveled before.
Thank you.
But Bill, you, you didn't have an actual Code of Conduct, correct? That was just how you chose as a board to handle it, right?
My belief is that we did get some advice from legal counsel about how to, how the board could express its sense of the board. I would have to dig deep to find that, but it seemed to be a route that was traveled in the past elsewhere with no problem.
Any other audience comments?
No, there are no other hands raised.
All right, so we'll do a second reading on this and vote at the next meeting. Okay? All right, special town meeting recap. I think it was great. I think that the crew, both Jennifer and Alex, did an amazing job in terms of presenting it and having it available for people. And I know that Linda worked hard, I know the whole Finance Committee worked really hard. But Linda presented something that I believe that the residents finally understood about how money was being used, and that was very useful. And other comments or things we would change for future meetings?
I only got positive comments about it from, you know, again, people who are routine, either attendees or watched from home. And they were, just generally, I mean, regardless of the outcome of particular votes that they may have had opinions about, but they definitely thought that the presentation and having the PowerPoint and the details behind the capital articles was very well received, so.
I think, I guess my only comment would be, and this has happened on every town meeting that I've been to, is some people show up and they go up to the microphone, like this is the first time they're ever hearing about this. And I, and the comments that are made seem like, we, we had a forum the week before that. You know, I think maybe townspeople need to take a little more initiative, I think. Because I felt like there was a lot of things that were brought up that could have already been answered previously.
And I actually thought because of, of the PowerPoint that was done the night of Town Meeting, that we actually don't need to do the previous meeting, because we had so few people that showed up for it.
Yeah, it just, I mean, there's a fine value in it if people don't.
And we, we were just so, every week doing something with the budget, that it's not something that's all of a sudden, oh my God, where did they get that from? I mean, it's been something that's talked about frequently as we go through the budget process. And disappointed that we didn't have very many people that came to the forum. But I think in presenting the PowerPoint that you did a great job on, Jennifer, thank you, that they were able to see it in a bigger light, even though it's on paper. I don't know what it is. to see it in a bigger light, even though it's on paper. I don't know what it is about PowerPoint, but it seems like people like the PowerPoint. And I think that made them pay attention to what was up there and what was, uh, they had to read and what was being said. So I don't know. Maybe the next time we'll think about even doing the forum again. I'm not sure how I'll feel about it in the spring, but it's just something I'd like us to think about.
I mean, we probably, I don't know if we probably have to do it, but.
I don't think you have to do anything.
No, I just, it just, it was a little frustrating, because people that have been tuning in, paying attention, and then people show up, and a, a town meeting should not have taken three hours.
No.
I think that's a little ridiculous, personally.
I think the forum was also useful, because I think the final result from the Finance Committee was how to present this, so people would understand it. And if we had not had the forum, that might not have been. But that can be done in the Select Board.
Yeah.
But don't forget, people, Alex is streaming, and that goes up on YouTube. So even though we may not have people physically present, there are plenty of people who actually.
But do we know how many people are watching right now?
Yes.
Anybody?
Right now, there's one on Facebook, one on YouTube.
Okay.
Cool. But there'll be more views later.
Right. But I think the whole, the whole comment.
Is it on TV at home? Is it, is it on TV?
It is, yes.
So, I mean, people are watching it on TV also, right now, but we don't know how many.
Yeah, it will, uh, have those numbers.
I think that my entire point was that people spend all year working their butts off, creating all this information, and it's readily available multiple ways. And then we have to sit through a three-hour town meeting where people are just, oh, this is the first time I've ever heard, and it's what is going on? Let me pick apart your spreadsheet. Let me pick apart your spreadsheet. And it's like, these people have been working all year for this, and now you're just gonna show up one day and treat people like that? Like, I, some of the stuff, I just, I was a little disappointed. I'll say that.
But that's not form of government.
Yeah. Unfortunately, yeah. Unfortunately, that's the nature of the beast with town meeting. And my feeling is that if we had 10 people show up to the forum, and 20 people watch it on TV, that's 30 people we, uh, reached before the town meeting. And I agree with you, Amy, that it, it's terrible that people don't spend the time to understand what's going on at town meeting, but they don't. But after the forum, I was talking to a woman who had very interesting questions and didn't understand some things, and I was able to help her out to understand. And I just think that's a good thing, and that's part of what we have to do. We have 5,000 residents in this town, and we had, what, 160 come to Town Meeting?
Yeah.
That is not a good feeling, that that's how this town is represented, uh, in the choices that are being made. Uh, but it is how it works. I mean, somebody stood up at Town Meeting and said, yeah, I, I don't want 80 people making the decision on these things. But again, that's how it works. So, uh, we can't go drag people to Town Meeting as much as it would be nice to, uh, but.
But we did have more this time than we've ever had to do to start on time at seven o'clock.
Yeah. And we had a lot at the end. And I did want to say that the, uh, the climate change question, even though it got voted down, there was a lot of talk about it. I saw Jack Psychowski a couple of days later. I spoke to him. I said, look, you guys did a really good job. Keep up the good work. People felt like, what I understood was, don't throw all this stuff at us. Give us a little bit at a time that we can understand and, and work on that. And so hopefully they'll continue to do that.
And one of the things that the Climate Change Committee had hoped was to make climate change a conversation, and that certainly happened.
Yes.
Because of Town Meeting.
And people were quite respectful at the meeting. I, I was impressed with that.
All right.
Okay.
Anything else?
Continuous improvement. I mean, if there, we're always open to ideas to do things differently. But this, I think this was definitely a positive step that Carolyn and, and.
Jennifer.
Jennifer and Alex and everybody that had anything to do with it.
Yes. Thank you, Paul.
I just want to say also that the department heads who were so open to, we, we actually were gonna, the, the PowerPoint was in place for a few weeks. And it was, I, I have to thank all of the departments that pulled together to put all of those, um, slides, presented the slides for Jennifer to put together. I mean, it was, I really, and, and I am a firm believer, and you have to give visuals. And some people were resistant to that, but Kirk was open to it. And I was so, I appreciated that. And everybody who had to put things together, Linda put things together. And I think they got excited about it. Certainly, you could see the passion in each of them as they, they talked about what they were talking about. So I just, I really have to give credit to all of the employees who were involved. And thank you to Susan and to Dan, who also helped with all of the preparation for that warrant to go on. So I just.
And thank you for all of your work.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. We've done six one and six two. Other items?
Six three.
My six three, too.
Wow.
And they're here. Tracy and, um, Mike are here.
Hi there. This is Tracy from EverSource.
This is Tracy.
Tracy Dyk Redmond. Thank you so much for having us. Can you hear me all right? Oh, am I a little loud? I'll try to be quieter. Very good. Well, thank you very much. And Michael Kane is here with me from EverSource. Um, we met with you back, um, on October 5th, and wanted to come back to you to talk about the, um, uh, the project that we're proposing at EverSource's Area Work Center at 55 Russell Street in Hadley. Um, and the project is a solar and battery storage project. Um, so I wanted to come back and just give you some updates about the project and answer any questions that you have. Um, so as you may recall, um, from when we talked about it last time, this is a project that would add, as I said, um, solar, um, energy generation and battery storage at that Area Work Center. Um, it would be built at no cost to the municipality. And we see that the project can offer several key benefits, um, to, to the town of Hadley. One is that, um, the solar power generated at the site would be sold into the wholesale energy market, and those revenues would be allocated to the benefit of Hadley, specifically with a focus on communities that meet the state's definition of environmental justice communities. So those revenues could be allocated in the form of a bill credit, or in a grant, or some combination of the two. Um, so we, we, uh, would anticipate that those revenues would, from the solar power generation, would fully go to benefit Hadley. In addition, um, during power outages, the solar power would be used, um, onsite as clean backup power for emergency response activities, and that, that currently go on at that Area Work Center, um, and would basically displace, um, fossil fuel power generators at that site. Um, the project would increase the commercial tax base for the town. It would reduce fossil fuel emissions, both locally, as I mentioned, by displacing the fossil fuel generators, um, when there are power outages, but also regionally by, um, selling clean energy into the grid. And the project would contribute to job creation and workforce development in several different ways. And I can go into that if, if you're interested in the details, but, but we, um, definitely would prioritize with this project, um, maximizing the use of the local workforce, um, and providing lit, living wages for those working on the project. So we're proposing to build, um, solar arrays on the roof area of the Area Work Center, and on an adjacent parking canopy, which would be built just next to the building on the east side. And there's a picture of, of sort of the, uh, extent of the array and the attachments to the agenda of the meeting. Um, so I want to get now to the updates. All of that is the same in what I talked about at, at the last meeting that I attended, um, on October 5th. Um, what's different about the project, that I just want to share with you is the extent of the project. And thank you for sharing the, the photograph here. So, um, as you can see, this is a smaller extent of the project than, than I had proposed when I came to talk with you last time. And the reason is, um, that we, we were proposing to scale it back, is that there are hosting capacity limitations at this site. Um, and what that means is that there's only so much solar and battery, um, capacity that can be added at that site without requiring expensive upgrades to the electrical circuit, which would also delay the project. So, um, so we are proposing to scale it back to fit within the hosting capacity of the site. But still, the, the, you know, the revenues from this project would benefit the town. And one benefit of having a smaller project like this is that we expect that the permitting process would probably be simpler. Um, so the, the other thing is that, that if hosting capacity limits change in the future, it might be possible to add solar and battery capacity at the site. But for now, we see benefit in, in demonstrating the concept and starting to provide benefits for the community. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And what I'm hoping is that, you know, if, if the Select Board, um, feels that this is a good project concept, um, that you might be willing to, um, to write a, a, a brief letter of support, and we could provide a template if you like, which we would then, um, include in a petition to DPU. Um, we would need DPU's approval to start this project. Um, and so we would love to have a letter of support from you. We wouldn't go forward if the town didn't support it. Um, and then if the town supports it, and then if DPU supports the project, then we would, um, begin the project in earnest and go through all the regular permitting processes, um, that, that we would typically go through in a town. Um, and then we would also, um, go through a procurement process to select a contractor who would build the project. So it is a bit of a lo, a long time to get this underway, but the first step is to see whether it's a project concept that, that you approve. And, and that's what I'd love to hear if you have any questions.
Are there any questions? I don't have a problem with it.
No. It's, it's an allowed use in the district. They are looking to get the, the process started through the Select Board, through this letter of support they're asking for. And once they get all their approvals from the, the state, then they have to come back to the Planning Board and go through site plan approval. And that ultimately will dictate what they can do there. So I have no problem with this. I would make a motion to provide the letter of support that they're asking for.
Would we like them to present the letter, or do we want to write out?
I was just gonna ask you.
She said she'd give a draft.
All right.
That we can look at.
Okay.
I'll second that. Oh, did you do that on there?
Yeah.
Don't you quit tonight.
I'm hungry. Yes, take it home.
All right. I have a motion by Randy and a second by Amy to, um, review the letter that they will submit, I assume for the next meeting, and, um, approve that, so that they can get on with their other permitting. I don't know if they have to come to the next meeting. I mean, if we approve the letter today, or do you want to see the draft first before we sign it?
I think, I think we should see the draft.
I think we should see the draft.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, they might sneak something in there.
I don't know if they can.
If, if, uh, if you, if you send it to me, then I can send it right out to the Select Board, so they'll have read it before the next meeting.
Sure. That'd be fine.
Sure. That'd be fine. All right. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you for coming.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Take care.
All right. Now, the Town Administrator's report.
All right. I did want to, uh, just, uh, kind of give you an update on what's happening with, uh, the Route 9 widening project and the conversations that are taking place pretty much on an ongoing basis. Um, the, you know, the dirty work started probably around August. And, um, we are actually completed with the water replacement for the town, the ones that we're paying for that, that, uh, they helped us, saved us about a million dollars. So that, um, all of the pipes have been replaced. Uh, and, let's see. Um, I, I guess the most important thing is, um, that we have worked closely with Baltasar. Um, I know that there's been issues with at least one business where it was just a lot of impact on that business. And there was a lot of discussions between the owner of that business, myself, Baltasar, um, as, as well as Mass DOT and trying to get more updates on it. Some of it we couldn't, it wasn't real time. So there was a level of frustration. So I just wanted to share with you, there, at, at least one that I know of that we worked closely with, but really could not accomplish the best communication planned. I think they're done in that area that had that impact. But what I, uh, what I did want to let you know is, uh, Scott McCarthy, our DPW Director, has done a very good job of, of, uh, speaking on behalf of Hadley. So I can't get into the nitty gritties about certain corrugated pipes versus this size pipe versus that. But he will, if he's not happy with something, he, he puts a meeting together. We just had one yesterday, and it was Mass DOT engineers, project managers, project manager for Baltasar. And Scott was, um, really on board pushing for what he felt was best for Hadley. So we also have, um, staff from the Water and Sewer Department keeping an eye on the progress, um, throughout, throughout the week. So, um, I ju, I just wanted to share that, that there's a lot of conversation. If we don't speak weekly with Baltasar or the, uh, engineer from Mass DOT, it's, it's, it's every other week. But pretty much it's every day that there's some contact with somebody from Hadley. So you are being well advocated for, um, by those employees. Um, I did want to touch you about, um, the, the Hock Signal Light, which is what it's called, which is, was the location of that recent hit and run. Um, Senator Commerford and I spoke on the phone for a while yesterday in wanting to know, have there been other concerns expressed? To, to me specifically, there has not. I would like to know if you have gotten, um, any concerns or responses, um, from residents. She has spoken with a, a family member, and what we, what, Senator Commerford and I agreed that we would wait for the state and local police's investigation to be completed to find out what all the factors were. And then I, I do foresee there being a, a conversation with Senator Comfort, Commerford here at one of your Select Board meetings to just say, um, whatever, whatever the results are, what, if there's a concern about the safety of that light, um, to see how you guys want to work together. So I just wanted to let you know, conversations are taking place regarding that. But also, the textile recycling program has began November 1st. Uh, so DEP, um, initiated a waste ban effective November 1st. So there is a box located at, um, it's called, from, it's a, the best, the Bay State Textile Collection Box is located at the transfer station. If you have a sticker, you can bring unwanted clothing and other textiles to the transfer station. If you don't have a sticker, you can go to, um, Salvation Army, um, on Russell Street and get your textiles that you don't want.
Can I just make a comment to that? Please look at the boxes where you're leaving things, because there are textile recycling boxes that people are also leaving, um, textiles at.
Okay.
So it, it's a specific sorting.
Yeah. Just.
Good luck with that, Jane.
Aye.
Jennifer kind of just said the same thing. It's really hard. Yeah.
That was actually a really large concern as we were moving forward with this and working with Patrick Kennedy.
Yeah.
Um, it was how to prevent people from leaving things. And we, you know, through discussion with Carolyn and Patrick and our recycling coordinator, Kathy Nelson, who we should all give a nice shout-outs to. She's very dedicated.
Yes, she is.
We looked at what was the best way and the most, um, observed way of having processes that the town was providing. And what, what we came out on was that it's best for right now to keep them at the transfer station, and that way you don't have people piling things up on town property. So, um, with, you know, that was, there was a discussion that how, how keep having it be good.
All right. So, um, and I, I honestly can't remember if I brought up the opioid settlement that is, um, Hadley is receiving funds for every, actually across the nation. There was a, um, a settlement, uh, with three pharmaceuticals that had to pay into an account, um, to, to support municipalities on the impact of the opioid crisis. So, um, Mike Mason and Annie McKenzie, um, we've met, and they have, they're going to continue to meet to try to find a program in place that would be the most efficient. It's, it's about 25 years' worth of money. It's a small enough amount of money, though, that you really can't hire a person. But if we could, we could, um, piggyback onto another program, and Annie and Mike Mason are helping with that. So I just want to let you know. That's it.
All right. Let's go back to the Hock Light. I've had, um, two people comment to me that they think that they are not the best solution. Um, and today I noticed, when I was driving down Route 9, just as I got close to the light, it turned solid yellow. Then it started blinking. So I pulled over afterwards just to see what was gonna happen, because I had actually never seen one that was in the process. And I think it's confusing because it's, it's, it doesn't turn red for a long time. And so people don't know what that means. There's nothing that indicates what you're supposed to do. There's nothing that indicates what you're supposed to do.
I think people just don't read too, and it's not something that you learn in driver's ed either.
Right.
But, because I've seen it both ways, I've seen people just driving straight through it not paying attention, but I've also seen people sitting there stopped when it's, you know, blinking red. And it distinctly tells you what to do, but I don't think many people are observant potentially when they're driving.
I think there should be a better light there.
But I don't think that's a good light, yeah.
Someone pushes a button, it should turn red so they can cross.
Right, like I don't, I think there's just too many options on it, like I don't find it, you know, I don't think it's an appropriate light for that type of heavy travel. I mean, I could see it maybe on a less traveled street, but on a four-lane highway, that just doesn't seem like an appropriate option.
But we've asked for years, there and at the elementary school, to have the school district lights put up 20 miles an hour like they are in every other town, that this is a school.
Yeah, they have like a blinking school zone, one that's been there that doesn't even have anything on it, yeah.
So I mean, those are things I've seen in other communities everywhere, that when you approach a school zone, you've got one 20 mile an hour, one going one way, and 20 mile an hour going another, so that a certain section of town is only 20 miles an hour. I went through town this morning, and I just pulled through the light while someone just whizzed on by, and I bet you they were going at least 50 or 60 miles an hour in the center of town. Which is, I know that past that is 40 miles an hour, but they're going way over 40 miles an hour, and I'm sure they're doing faster than that going through the center of town.
Well, the light in question is also in a terrible place coming from North Hampton. You come around a corner, and then you're right on it.
Yeah.
So it probably needs to move. I would imagine that it got put there so the people could go from the courthouse over to Cumberland's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or the bus stop is there.
There, yeah, there's bus stops on both sides.
Yeah.
The state dictated the location of that, because we had extensive, extensive discussion with them about that.
Yeah, I mean, even if it moved up to Wally or Goff, whatever the next street up is, it'd be another several hundred feet.
So would you like, I think we should put it on the future agenda, and I think we should invite Senator Commerford. If you're okay, I'll kind of feel out where they are in the investigation, if it's like, you know, they're still two months out, I'll see.
Oh, even the 20 miles an hour is school zone, so that it says, when the lights are blinking between this and this, this is when it's 20 miles an hour. So I mean, it's also designated and quite clear to people either way. And I had them up in Salisbury all year.
And Carolyn, I don't necessarily think that the, where they are in the investigation is an important factor here, because I think all of us agree that the way that light functions is not a good thing, it's confusing, and that's not going to change, no matter what they do with the investigation.
Only we can take an action, though, right?
Correct.
We couldn't do it, we couldn't make any changes if they're still under investigation.
We can't make changes on that.
We don't want to make changes.
We have to make, we have to advocate to Mast DOT, that's.
We can make our town recommendation to them.
Yes, that's, and that's what I think.
Yeah, that's all we can do, yeah, I understand that.
Can I offer a recommendation? When the Hock Crossing Signal is put in place, Lieutenant Cook did a PSA explaining how it worked, and he worked with Hadley Media to do that, and I don't know if you can access the files that he gave you, but it might be worthwhile for the town or for Lieutenant Cook to put on his hat again, and maybe do a PSA for that, and then we could put it on the website, put it on Hadley Media, and maybe even reach out to the local news sources to see if they could sort of, it might, it might be worth our, a little bit of effort on our part to do that, and sort of just give everybody a reminder on how to use the Hock Crossing, and if you push it a little bit harder, it might help in the meantime, while y'all are getting to the point with the discussions with Carolyn and Senator Commerford. It might be.
When was that installed?
It was when I was on Select Board.
Yeah, that would have been four years ago, I would say. So that's how many new 16-year-olds with licenses and how many new residents that might have not had experience with them.
And the other thing is, as we spoke earlier about our numbers, we're a town of 5,500 people with 100,000 people driving on Route 9. Those are the people we need to notify.
Those people that need to be educated.
Well, if you see if a news source might cover it, I don't know how that works, but if you could get 40 or 22, or, I see you have an idea.
Well, if we can get Senator Commerford involved.
I want to be careful, I would rather like do some, you know, I think there's important conversations to have before we start, or you start. Yeah, and actually, at this point, I would say let's get it on agenda to talk more in more depth.
Okay.
Senator, this did reach out a while back, actually, with the 40 accident, so, because someone complained about it, I think, I'll log them, see if he wants to suggest him do that.
I think that's your.
Yeah, we'll talk about it, for sure.
All right, on another agenda.
Just don't want to get you guys in trouble.
All right.
What?
Shay.
We can, we can talk, we can talk.
All right. All right, announcements.
I have one, we have the passing of Maria Sliz, she was our older, one of our older residents at 95 and lifelong resident of Hadley, so our condolences to her two daughters and friends and family that may still be here, she lived on West Street, so condolences to her family. Just want to bring up also to thank Hadley Fire and Police for their trunk or treat, they did a great job also, that was a well-attended function also, so thank you to them for providing that, and Park and Rec that was involved in that also, so that was good. Hadley Police Department has started their angel tree, so you can email or send in a request that you want to adopt a family to provide presents or whatever they might need, their requests might be for Christmas. The Holy Redeemer Church is also a part of it, they will have a tree, you can take an angel off of their tree and support that also. Email Lauren at the Hadley Public Safety, she also will take any type of donations or whatever, and see what is needed out there for this coming up season.
I skipped over other items for future discussion, I was just writing off the Hock Light, is there anybody else who has anything else we should put on future agendas? All right, I may have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Joyce.
Second.
Second by Randy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.